I can get by.
Hey, are we on?
We are recording.
Excellent. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome all. Today is Monday, March 21st, 2022. The time is 6:00 PM. This is the Village of Swamaco Board Meeting, and at this time, I would like to call the meeting to order. And if I could, could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Trustee Schneider to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Trustee Ward. Any further discussion from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Six zero. At this time, let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right, item number five, presentations. Shared Grant Writer Update from One Mr. Ben Rogers.
All right, Ben, coming up. So as you know, Ben was hired in January and has had a few months under his belt to get settled in, and I asked him to prepare a brief presentation about his role and what he's been working on. So Ben, I'll just toss it right over to you. I'll scroll down here on your presentation and just let me know if you want to switch slides.
Okay, thank you, Alex. So, yeah, I'm Ben Rogers, and I know, like, all of you on the board. But just a little bit background about myself. Graduated UW-Green Bay in 2008. Communications with emphasis in journalism. I have a decade of newspaper experience. That's a lot of researching, putting items together, keeping track of things, living on a deadline. More than half that was as an editor. And personally, I just completed a year as President and CEO of the Beja Shriners. It's a group of 350 men. I act as the planner. I made a budget. I ran meetings. I had to deal with some politics with other temples and stuff like that. So I was the second youngest person in the nation to hold that position, and the youngest one at Beja. So but most importantly about me is this is an opportunity here, and I'm very excited to actually make an impact in the community directly. In newspapers, we like to write things to let the public know what's going on. Sometimes we pick up causes. But this is actually an opportunity to directly impact the community, and I'm very excited about that. Next slide, please, Alex. So what made this position a reality? Alex made this position a reality. He heard about a shared grant writer position in Waupaka. That grant writer Greg is employed in a 33% share with the school district, the Chamber, and the city of Waupaka. By position, the Howard-Swamaco School District pays for half, and then Swamaco and Howard pay the remaining half of that. And I started on January 5th. There are ample opportunities, federal, state, local level, for grants for me to look into, and I've been doing quite a bit of that. So next slide, please. So did you know that we are in the midst of the greatest grant opportunity in a generation? And I do not say that lightly. In 2021, there was more than $4 trillion awarded in grants in the United States. The approach that we are taking here is a unique approach. Not everybody is doing this. Grant writers traditionally are in bigger cities and bigger communities. They see that need. Here, we see that need. It's very innovative of you, so I want to thank you for seeing that need and giving me this opportunity. Next slide, please. So just a little bit about the differences of the grants out there. Federal grants, you can ask Joe. They are very extensive. They are extremely lengthy, and they take up to nine months to review. This is where the big money is. But you have to meet certain criteria for some of those grants. State grants usually come from pots of money from the federal government, but you have to meet, like, certain federal standards with those. So the federal government's going to give money for transportation, which goes to the Wisconsin DOT, which then puts it to, like, an MPO, which then has, you know, and so on and so forth. Those grants generally are quicker. They take about six months to review. Foundation grants, there are two types of foundations, your national foundations and your local foundations. Small applications, smallest amounts, the quickest turnaround, usually in a few months at most. Next slide, please. So my current efforts, where I'm at, what I've been doing, since January 5th, I have submitted eight total grants. Three of those were federal grants. There is a state grant and four foundation grants. The pending total that we're waiting to hear back on for the Village of Swamaco is over $300,000. The majority of that are from two federal grants and from one foundation grant. And by the end of the week here, working with Nick, we're going to have a submission for $50,000 for funds for the Calvera Park Soccer Complex. Next slide, please. So just a little bit about me, about grant writers in general. I'm fairly new to this, but I've taken some courses. I've spent a lot of time reading and researching things. It's important to note that a grant writer is not a silver bullet. I can't come in here myself and start just getting huge chunks of money. It's a collaborative effort. Really, if you see my fourth point on the slide, a grant writer is only as good as the team he works with. Very fortunate here to have a supportive team in Swamaco. Alex set me up with a great list of priorities to look into. Me and Joe spent entirely too much time together the first, like, three weeks on the job, hammering out some really heavy federal applications. And Nick's been a great help so far with this Calvera Park Soccer Complex act. Nick comes on board. He's like, "Yeah, I'm from West Bend. We just did one of those big grants. Let me put a call in. We'll get you their application to take a look at." So I had something that was accessible to look at right away from that, and we've been working for a few weeks on kind of polishing this last one. Grants really are seed money to address issues. You can look at a grant as a funder making an investment. They want to see something. They want some deliverable results. And it's just kind of aligning our priorities with what those results are. You need to spend money to make money. So an example of that is the kayak launch at Fireman's Park. Village of Swamaco got a grant from the Knowles-Nelson Program from the DNR. In order to get that DNR grant, you had a comprehensive outdoor recreation plan that lasted five years. At that time, those plans aren't cheap to put together. They're still not cheap to put together, but I believe you got somewhere between, like, $40,000 and $50,000 for that project, which is considerably more than the cost to put it in. So there is some investment on municipalities' parts. Grant writing's a very supportive community. Chatting with Greg in Waupaka, I went down there and spent half a day with him, shared all his tips and secrets, and gave me a bunch of forms and said, "Check this out and look at this." And he'll send me some opportunity, and I'll send something back to him. And we bounce a lot of questions around. So even though it is competitive and there's a limited pot of money, a lot of times, those opportunities don't really line up for different places. So there's a lot of resources to share and to go around with. And probably one of the most important things here, as a grant writer, I write the grant. I don't influence administration in any way whatsoever. If there's, you know, something that we need to do, I'll talk to Alex and say, "What about this? How do you feel about this?" I'm not making open promises here on behalf of the village, but we're going to do what we can do with what we have and what fits and what works best for everybody to get the most results. Next slide, please. Okay, so how can you help on the village board? Keep your eyes open for opportunities and let me know. You're all very well-connected people. You're intelligent people. You know the community. If you see something from a business here and they have a foundation, maybe I don't know about it. Let me know about that. No idea is a bad idea. A lot of what I do, like, right now at the school district, for instance, people come to me with a lot of ideas, and I usually take a few hours to research the opportunity, see if it aligns with priorities, and I get back to them. So please feel free to stay in touch. There's my email up there again. So if you do, you know, see something that could be a benefit, let me know. That's what I'm here to do, to do that legwork, that research, that editing, that formatting, everything. Put it together and submit it on behalf of the village. Next slide, please. So does anybody have any questions?
I was, nothing against you, Ben, but I was very opposed to this position, especially sharing it with the school board and with Howard. I just, I think we got to be very... He's smiling at me because he's heard me say it a million times, and I didn't bring my water or my glasses today. So I might run out of... But I just, I think we got to be so careful when we're holding out our hands for money and to make sure that those strings, that they're no strings attached. Now, you said seed money. That's an interesting thing for everybody to be aware of, seed money. So you're going to get us a little pocket of money to start with. That means we got to spend more with our ideas. We get this idea. We get the seed money. We get a little bit of money. That means we have to find more money yet. And then we have to find more money even yet to maintain what we build, what we have. So that's something you guys have to look out for.
We, all of us, right?
All of us. And I didn't bring my glasses. And I wrote the notes. Spend money to make money. That's great in the private sector, but I'd be very careful about saying that in the public sector. So there, I said my piece, and I got it.
So I'd offer two comments on grants, just real quick. So one thing, one thing that makes me okay with this position and with this pursuit is the fact that grants are not just because we win a grant, doesn't mean we accept a grant. So that has to come before the board, and the board has to make that decision. And part of that decision-making process is, and this is why I said the "we", Trustee Eckert. Part of that is when this grant comes to the board for our review, part of it has to come with that, what's the return on investment of this grant? And what's the long-term cost? And that's administration. So if we receive a grant for a kayak launch, for example, and we get $60,000 for a kayak launch, and it's going to cost us another $60,000 to put the kayak launch in, what is that return on investment for the community? What happens with that? How does that become an anchor for the community and add to business, right? Or add to opportunities, or add to recreational value? So those are some key things. The other thing is, is you're going down your grant writer role, and I've had the wonderful opportunity to write a number of federal grants, and very long. Eighty pages was a small one. I would encourage you to focus on the non-federal grants. The dollars aren't as great, but there's a lot less confusion to them, a lot less work that goes into them. The Robert Wood Johnson Foundation is a good foundation that offers a number of grants. There's also a number of different national websites out there that you can look at, different companies that offer grant. I wrote you a letter. Who offered us that grant for the $50,000?
That's T-Mobile.
Okay, so there's a great example. T-Mobile offered $50,000 under this grant opportunity. There's a lot fewer strings to that. We find out a lot sooner. Not that there are no strings. I know it's still a lot of work, but I would encourage you to focus on those. So I'm glad you're here. I'm glad that we're working together on this. And I would also finally go along with Trustee Eckert and say, you know, let's make sure, again, before we accept anything, that we know what that return on investment is and we know what the issues around it are. Thank you.
And to be clear, most of, if not all, of these grant applications are for projects or equipment that we were planning on spending money on anyway, you know, be it police safety equipment or the Calvera soccer fields. These are projects that were in our plans to spend taxpayer dollars, and instead, we might get some grant money to pay for it instead.
You know, some of my fellow trustees have some additional experience with grants. Maybe they'd like to comment.
I've written, I don't know how many grants, but they're all pretty much educational-based, but they are all federal, Perkins Title I Special Ed grants. They are somewhat time-consuming, both on the front and the back end, because you got to, for federal, you got to provide the documentation for it. But there is a lot of money that is available to either supplement or supplant what you're putting in for. It is time-consuming, though. But I see your point about being careful with it, but I also see the benefit of having another revenue source to pay for things. Sky, how do you quantify the return of investment on a park?
There's a lot of different ways you could do it. I mean, there's obviously the quality of living, which is a little bit more fuzzy. But I mean, you can look at the location. Are we putting that park in the new Chambers Hill development?
I'm just trying to wrap my head around how you're saying, well, it has to meet... I took it as you have to meet a certain threshold, and I'm just, what threshold is that? I just don't know how you... How do you evaluate and come up with a particular...
I think it's different on every project. Right? I mean, a trail system that goes from Victory Village to Urban Edge, you know, that's a little easier to quantify when we talk about, you know, the availability and providing access to those locations.
I just...
Yep.
When you said that, I was like, how are you... What parameters are you setting up for that? So, no, I've done a lot of them. They're time-consuming, but they are beneficial. And the only part that I am concerned about in your position is, obviously, you spend 50% with the school, and then it's a 30-20 split between Howard and us. I don't know how you are documenting how those percentages are going to be out on your time. Are you punching the clock? Or how are you justifying, "Well, I have 20% to this," or "I'm putting too much to the school" or "too much to Howard"?
Too much to Swamaco.
Not enough to Swamaco.
Yeah, if it was Joe, I'd just be for Swamaco 100%, if it was his choice.
Fire's got enough of it. Now spread the wealth. He's got a new house to play with. He doesn't need anymore.
Yeah, that's a great question, Mike. You know, really, I came on. It was these two federal grants. So before I even started, I had an email from Paul and an email from Alex telling me to go after some giant FEMA money. That was pretty much my entire first month. I didn't do anything for the school district at all. You know, I've kind of dialed back on that. In terms of, like, a cut for a percentage, some grants, like, working with Officer Pisani for handheld radar units, you know, that took maybe like two days. So that's not a real quick one. So I was okay fitting that in the month after 60% of my time went to Swamaco. Really, what I'm trying to do is kind of align, you know, those priorities with what's available. And a lot of it, too, is working with deadlines. So, for example, between April 30th and July 31st, there are nine funding opportunities through local foundations, and there's no reason why all three municipalities shouldn't get one of each of those three.
My next thing was, are you duplicating things? You just said with Officer Pisani with the radar. Brown County uses ours. Brown County also does Howard. Are you...
Those would be for the Swamaco Police Department.
Well, what I'm asking is, are there opportunities to where you do both for one municipality as well as another, combine them together?
There are opportunities for that. Definitely with, like, Howard Fire Rescue is a main one. There's the Packerland Fire District. And that's something where there was, it's called an AFG, like, Assistance Fire Fighting Grant Program for equipment. And they got rolling on that, Howard, before I even came on. If I would have come on, I would have said, "Why don't we actually team up on this together and think of some stuff that we can all use?" And I think that's a really important part that you bring up, too, is that a big part of my job is collaboration, and it is working together. And, you know, a benefit for Swamaco is going to benefit the surrounding communities. That's going to benefit Howard, and that's likewise, too. If there's firefighting equipment that Howard gets, well, you know, Swamaco's going to respond and have access to that equipment. If we get an extra firefighter here in Swamaco, they're going to be able to respond to calls in Howard. Even with spreading, you know, like, the park, right? If you have a top-tier park here, it's not going to be just residents from Swamaco that are going to come and enjoy it. It's going to be residents from Howard and from around the area as well. So collaboration's a huge part of what we're doing, too, and that's kind of what makes this role so unique, is the ability to kind of work together with different organizations and share some resources.
Other questions?
Welcome aboard. I voted for this. I think it's a great opportunity for all three communities. Well, two communities and one school district to collaborate together. That's always been one of our missions. Not only this community, but Howard and the school district is all three of us working together in some form or capacity. So I think this answers that call. You know, we talk about return on investment. Well, as far as being a sales guy, my biggest return on investment is, did that asset pay for itself? And did we make money with that asset? So you are an asset to this community, and are we making more money than what we are paying out for your work? And I think that's probably going to be a bigger judge of success, is, you know, these grants, how they're applied, and what kind of return we get for these grants based upon what we're paying for your asset or for you. I think that's really all I have. I mean, I'm assuming as you move forward in your position that obviously recreation's going to have a lot of opportunity. Fire obviously has a lot of opportunity, and I look forward to seeing what you bring forward. If you have some opportunity to cut the cost of pickleball courts, that would be wonderful because that $170-some-thousand bill is hard for me to swallow, so...
All right, thank you.
I appreciate it, Ben.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the board before we move on?
No, I support you on this also. I think it's a great opportunity to help fund projects that are in our plans anyways, you know, between parks and trails and fire, safety. You know, many projects, so welcome.
Thank you.
Ben, just I'll say, welcome aboard, and I'm happy for what you've done so far, and I look forward to what you're going to do in the future. Much like Dan said, what you do is measurable, and I'm a data guy, so I'll be measuring it. I'll be looking at it, and I'm very confident that you're going to do just fine in that department. So thank you very much for what you've done so far.
Thank you.
Welcome, despite my hesitation.
It's good to have hesitation. That's all right.
Oh, there's lots of it.
Proof is in the pudding. All right, very good.
Thanks, Ben.
Thank you all. Thank you, Ben. All right, moving on to item number six. Item number six is public appearances. This is the time when the public may address the village board on items other than those scheduled on the agenda. And we ask that you speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name and address. No action, however, may be taken by the village board at this time on these issues. However, it may be referred back to committee for staff follow-up. If those persons wishing to speak on any item scheduled on the agenda would please approach now, we will have our public appearances. Thank you.
Anne Marie Ryback Monfiles, 12813 Velp Avenue. I'm here to discuss the proposed moving of the schoolhouse building onto the Ancestry Acres and where it appears to be staked out currently. And the meetings that we did in 2018 with several people in the community when Steve... Steve Kabaki was still here. And some of the agreements that were made and things that were proposed to pretty much our family or the surrounding neighbors, and there was an agreement or a proposed agreement of the kindness to the neighbors or agreeance to the neighbors and the neighborhood. At this point, if the wood stakes are an indication of where they're planning and putting it, they couldn't have put it in a worse place for the affected neighbor, which is my husband and I. So I'm asking that that be revisited, if that can be. I know that there's a planning meeting coming up. We will plan on attending that as well. If we can be involved in that, I suggested that even up by the barn. I know that there was some talk, and my sisters remembered something about that there were some proposed green space items and some trees and stuff. Why couldn't it be put up there and, like, maybe a pathway to walk to it instead? That it's not going to affect... We're still, we're going to see it out of any of our windows. However, this is, like, proposed right on top of us right now. So I just wanted it to be, our concern be heard and brought in today, so then...
Ms. Ryback, I know that there was a letter that you had written to Administrator Kaker. So this being on the agenda for planning and zoning, I think the details of this would come out in planning and zoning.
Okay.
But what I would ask for, and I appreciate your comments here, but what I would ask is your permission to... Could we enter that as a public record? Or is it already a public record?
It's an email, so it's a public record.
So with your permission, though, of course?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, so that should go to planning and zoning in preparation for this? And then I would encourage you, if there's any other materials that you have that you'd like to get into the hands of Administrator Kaker, that you provide those to him before planning and zoning looks at it? Because that's where they're going to look at how far away are from the property line, what were the previous agreements? And then planning and zoning will make a recommendation to come to this, to this board for them to make a decision on it. Did anyone... I think that pretty much sums it up.
I agree. Planning and zoning will be a good discussion point. And the committee members of that, of the planning and zoning, obviously, will take your concerns and neighbors' concerns in consideration while the proposed location is determined.
A consideration, too. You mentioned to me that there might be, like, a water lateral or...
It was my understanding that that's where the laterals for both the property... So the property that went with the driveway, the lateral, the lateral and my lateral were put in right together, and I believe it's right where they put the stakes. And as we were driving here tonight, even, like, all the work that they've been doing, it looked like the two little indentations where they go in. And I can't say that for sure, but I looked as we drove by, and I went, "Hmm, I wonder if that's what those are." Because they would have been respectively where I was thinking they were.
Andy, do we have, where laterals actually go into the houses mapped?
You do not have it mapped beyond the right-of-way, but that is our Erickson property. So we may have records on that, but we'll have to look.
If you could provide those, too, for planning and zoning.
Often they have tracer wires, so we can, should be able to trace them up as far as need to go.
So what is the date on that meeting?
Wednesday, April 13.
Excellent. So you have some time to get that...
And we were informed of that.
Okay, okay, good. I just want to make sure. So Wednesday, April 13th, we can get into this in detail, I think.
Fabulous. Again, we were just wanting to bring...
I'm glad you did.
Thank you.
I'm glad you did. Thank you, and thank you for your... I took a little bit of a history lesson from what you provided, Alex, as well, so thank you for that as well.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I'd like that when we get things ahead of time, too, so we know what's coming.
Right, I agree. And this is an issue where we need those ahead of time.
And he will get those lines traced, so we know where they're at.
We'll locate them up as far as we can.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Ryback. All right, is there anyone else who would like to come forward at this time for public appearances? Good evening.
Good evening. Amy Rubrite at 2274 Cathedral Forest Drive, Swamaco. I just wanted to take a few minutes tonight to introduce myself. I'm running for a seat for Howard Swamaco School Board. I've been a resident since 2013, and I have three children in the district. Some of my core values are, that are guiding me on this journey, are my parental choice and input and wise investing. And my guiding principles are willingness to learn, respect, and honesty. And my purpose is to represent the community. I'm always willing to meet to have a conversation, and to date, I've had five meet and greets with the community members, and I have one more scheduled yet this week. If you guys have any questions, otherwise, I'll let you continue with your meeting.
I appreciate you running for office.
This is very outside my...
They're few and far between.
It's a very outside my comfort zone, but it's been a great opportunity, speaking with people in the community and hearing where everybody stands and what issues are coming up. It's really been a great experience, so...
I think everyone here would probably agree it's an excellent learning experience.
Door knocking is very hard, but it's very worthwhile.
Worst they can do is say no.
Exactly.
Do you have a webpage or a Facebook page?
I do have a Facebook page, so... Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the introduction.
Thank you. Anyone else who would care to come forward for a public comment? All right, very well, seeing no one else, we will move on to item number seven, consent agenda. Previous minutes of the village board dated 3/7/2022. Item B, updated 2022-2023 poll worker list. Item C, February 2022 fire department report. And item D, March 2022 recreation report. Are there any questions on the consent agenda?
Just a quick question on the poll workers. So can we accept or deny anybody that's currently on the affiliated, I guess it would be affiliated list?
If you're looking at the unaffiliated, you can look at the unaffiliated. Those that are defined by the parties, we cannot.
Okay, that's what I thought. All right, very good.
For Nick, you're new, so I haven't picked on you yet. So I want you to feel welcome.
This is how she welcomes you.
Tells you you're doing bad.
Well, I see a lot of stuff about the trail and the route plans. And I know a lot of people would like a sidewalk on both sides or a trail on both sides. But I just, I would hope that as you get these committee, or as we get committees together, that we get people that are very budget conscious. And because they need to realize how much this kind of thing costs too, so.
Appreciate that input, absolutely.
Yeah, I would make a note on this, Swamaco Municipal Community Blood Drive that was held on March 16th. That's something that, provided I can, I try to make those. I've gone to a couple now at the Idlewild Park and just a compliment to the community, they're always packed. There's standing room only practically. What a great thing.
They collected 26 units that day, so potential impact was 78 lives, so. Pretty good turnout.
So thanks for keeping up on that. Are there other comments from the board?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from trustee Eckert to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from trustee Ward. Any further discussion or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you. All right, moving on to item number eight, planning and zoning ordinance. Ordinance 2022-04 adopting the modifications to the future land use map of the 2015 comprehensive plan. Zoning Administrator Dunkz.
Thank you. We are looking at three parcels here with a total of 90 plus or minus acres. Some of the land within these three properties is shown as future business park, light industrial on that future land use plan. This was changed during the last full plan amendment back in 2015. Prior to that, it was in the residential use. The thought was that extension of sewer and water up into this area would drive a possible business park. The eastern part of SU 178 does appear to be agricultural rather than the business. Property owner is looking to sell the property now. And the only market appears to be for residential use. Because land currently is on ag farmland preservation, we must first comply with the comprehensive plan as a condition of any rezone out of farmland preservation. So to rezone that to a residential use would not be in compliance with this plan. So we need to first update this so that that rezone could possibly come forward. Any rezone is supposed to be somewhat compliant with this plan. Ag farmland is just more stringent on that, complete compliance with that. Public hearing was held at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on March 9th. At that meeting, it was questioned about the vision of Swamaco and how it relates to commercial development. There is not much land available for business industrial uses and we just keep shrinking those available uses. Water and sewer services are only as far north as Velp Ave at Coach Lane. That means running almost 1.2 miles through mostly residential and a large portion of that is one-sided. That would be a substantial cost absorbed by those residents. And there's a number of those homes that are 750 plus feet off of that road. The cost of getting services up there for the commercial use would be a huge burden to those residents. Between your special assessments for that, being one-sided, those are going to be that much higher. Impact fees that they each have to pay for that connection, which today are at 7,400. And we're looking at almost a 9% on April 1st, so you're going to be up over $8,000 just in impact fees. And then private lateral installation, if you're going back 750 feet, some of them will include wetland crossings, which may mean that they have to be bored. And possibly additional even for a forced main because they're not going to be able to gravity feed, we're not going to get the sewer deep enough to gravity feed from 750 feet back through those wetlands. Those costs can't even begin to be estimated. Although it's a great idea to keep it for future business, the reality is we don't know from a service standpoint that we can effectively get services up there to keep it for industrial use. It's a good point brought forward, but your Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of this future land use map revision unanimously six zero. Thank you.
It doesn't look practical to run it out there. I mean, it's unfortunate because it's a disadvantage to our water and sewer customers. And it's also, it limits what we can have for businesses along the highway in the future.
Well, the other thing you have for future business up there is, what are you, a mile and a half from either interchange? Do you ever take? It doesn't, if there was a ramp at Norfield, it'd be almost a no-brainer.
True.
They like their highway access and it really isn't accessible.
So planning and zoning, sometimes when we're discussing issues like this, we get to be the beneficiaries of additional information. Some of that Administrator Dunkz was presenting. So we had Michael Brandt, RC Mowing spoke during that meeting and some of that was already summarized in what Mr. Dunkz presented. But specifically, he did a significant amount of research on available property within the village of Swamaco for industrial development, if you will. And he was shocked at the limited amount there is. I guess probably none of us are really shocked at the limited amount there is. Most of it's underwater most of the time of the year. But he did voice his concerns about, he's planning on a significant development here with regard to his business in the hopes that it anchors and provides an anchor for the further development of similar businesses. And he expressed some concern about, you know, if we're continually changing property over to make it residential from industrial, is this, is this an issue? Are we making the right choice? And as was pointed out, the Planning and Zoning Commission looked at this and looked at the locations. Again, as Mr. Dunkz pointed out, a mile and a half from either interchange is probably not a viable place for any kind of business that would really want to go in there. So that's why the Planning and Zoning Commission voted to change the zoning on this, but that was some background information.
Can you bring up the map? And is it? Yeah, that one. Now, that part you have, that rectangle, that's, this is only, the only part we're talking about tonight, right?
Correct.
So even, even the front of that, which goes along the road, there's no change to that. It's just, yeah, like right where G is, there's, there's no change. That, that still would be technically future water and sewer. We're not making any.
We're not modifying the future water and sewer areas. We're modifying the type of use as from light industrial to a residential use. And everything east of Velp remains in future business use.
Okay.
It doesn't mean we can't at some point run sewer and water up there and assess everybody, but.
Okay.
But we're not saying we're doing that either.
No, no.
I'm not going to say we're doing that.
No, we.
I'll let Andy do that.
No, we're not saying that.
We don't need a flood of phone calls on that. Okay.
Have we touched base with the other landowners that are part of this zoning? Have we discussed anything with the people north, south?
No. They were given letters, correct? They were notified, no. Only the affected property owners for this have been notified. This isn't one that we notify within 600 feet. The rezone will be when the actual rezone comes forward on 13th.
But I think if we're going to, if we're going to grant this, this essentially eliminates any opportunity for something like five years ago or whenever it was, that, that a big distribution center was looking at that property. So we really limit ourselves to any opportunity. I mean, shoot, if we, if we put this in residential, we might as well put that whole side of the street in residential because you're not going to get a whole, or anything, I guess, west of Velp because you're not going to get something to go in there of any size. That's what I struggle with is that we haven't talked to any of the other landowners up there to say, hey, should this be viable? Or what does this do to your potential land use in the future? That's, that's what I struggle with.
It's definitely not ideal.
No, I mean, we had an opportunity five years ago and obviously it went a different way. We don't know which way it went, but you know, there was an opportunity a while back that would have paid for water and sewer to get to that area. And this is our only industrial area. So I, I struggle with this a little bit because essentially it eliminates everything west of Velp to become developable into something industrial. So I, before I approve it, I'd like to hear from the other landowners in that area. Or landowners that are actually affected, I should say.
And the homeowners as well, because there are a lot of, if you look on the east side, the west side of it, it's all homeowners. They said, yes, if you go to the north, I mean, that's right in my neck of the woods. The north, there is one light industrial building, that's it between there and Norfield. Otherwise, it's just a, just a very big farm field.
Right.
And you know, you're right, there could be individuals, there could be individuals who would see this as a detriment because they wouldn't be able to market their land for light industrial. How would you propose having that discussion with those landowners? They've received a letter.
They have not.
They have not.
They have not.
They have not received a letter.
I thought they did.
No. So I, I think you bring this back to the next board meeting and send letters to those affected individuals. You know, I understand, you know, these houses that are right here. But this individual owns a big property here that potentially this impacts him.
That could, yes. And there's already a light industrial in that corner, so we're looking at the north, north of this piece of property. There is a small light industrial building, the Sarek construction there. So yeah, it's a good point.
That's a very good point.
Stephen, I remember right from planning and zoning that the owners, for the time they're, they've had this property or trying now to sell this. Haven't had a lot of interest in it as an industrial, but had a lot of interest in it as a residential or some.
They have a potential offer for it as residential. A wetland delineation has been completed. There's not a large amount of buildable area. It's going to be very broken up even as residential. The wetlands do impact it substantially. I don't know if, you know, I believe the one large distribution center was mainly to the south of Lost.
Lost Trail.
Trail. But again, I don't know. I was not part of those discussions. I, that was Mr. Kabaki that thought he had somebody interested in that.
Yeah, that didn't pan out, obviously. All right, so, so if I, if I'm understanding correctly and there's no additional comment, what I'm understanding is we would like to refer this back to staff to send out letters to adjacent property owners informing of them of what's on the docket here, changing the zoning to this piece of property, asking for any input that they would have or if they would like to. We'll have it on the next village board meeting and would they like to appear and discuss this? Is that appropriate or would you like something more?
No, that's, you know, that's the biggest effect is, is those landowners. And if they don't even know about it, do we change it? You're going to have some not so happy people.
That's very reasonable.
How large of an area would you like us to notify?
Well, I think those that are, that are affected.
Well, we did, the ones that were affected were the ones that applied for this change.
No, no, but the.
Adjacent.
Adjacent, the ones that are in that zoning area. So I don't think you have to do the east side of the highway, but definitely the west side of the highway. All those that are in the gray area. And it's not, what is that, five people, 10 people maybe at most? There's not that many landowners up there.
I'm looking at them now, there's only like three.
Just the thought being that if you turn that into a residential subdivision or some type of lots, you now take away value from their property because it, it, future development wouldn't have the ability to buy all the lots at once. That's your thought process?
Yeah, that's.
Right, I mean, if there's a big complex that wants to go up there that could pay for those services. Oh, there, he's just going to pull it up there.
And if you're planning for the future, I would think two weeks is worth looking into.
Well, yeah, I mean, look at how much time we spent on the comprehensive plan to zone that that way and.
I'm okay with that.
So a lot of it's the same owners, except Toncheck.
Toncheck owns most of it to the south and Revolinski owns most of it to the north.
Yep.
And Klatchka's own the rest of it and that they're the ones that are asking for it, so.
I mean, I don't think, I think you notify those four landowners to the north of Norfield because they're actually in that zoning.
South and north.
Those are all Revolinski.
Aren't these people in that? Isn't like Ryan and Emily Nolak?
No, that's on the, that's on the north side of Norfield. This is the south side of Norfield. This piece of property is between Lost Trail and south of Norfield.
Yeah, but they're zoning. Oh, I'm sorry, my bad. Now that I'm looking at this, it's the street, my bad. Why are they gray then? Can you flip back to the other map? Why are those four lots gray? That are outside the purple area?
They're not. That's, oh, I.
Yeah, because that, that's.
They're between Velp and 41, the ones you're talking about. Velp Avenue comes up.
Right, but where he has his cursor right now, those shouldn't be gray.
That's east of Velp Avenue.
East of Velp Avenue?
That's east.
That is east of Velp Avenue. The purple line sits on Highway 41.
Yeah, it is. Because that's where the trailer and RV sales are right there.
All right, my bad. I was looking at this intersection.
Yeah, you can't see it on the screen here, but that is, that's Velp right here.
Okay.
So staff, do you have, could you just summarize what the board was asking or would you like me to read?
All I, all I need to know is how, how far do you, because we don't have, we don't do notifications for the future land use map. We didn't in 15, we just did it through our public notices.
I think this is big enough.
In the newspaper, do we want to go the standard 600 feet from property lines of those asking for this? Do we want to go larger than that so we get the opinion of some of them that are actually in residential too?
In a spot like this.
I think.
It's a pretty crucial spot.
I don't think you're going to get, I mean, if you start asking folks who are already in residential there, I don't think you're going to get them to say, no, I'd like to have that light, state light industrial. I know, it was good worth asking.
I think anybody that's gray on that side of the highway should get a notice. Because I, I think that's going to impact their, arguably is going to impact their property value.
And the other thing is they may come back and want that all changed to real residential.
Right. So we talk about our, our future use plan, I mean, that kind of got touched on in planning and zoning. And I think we've, like off of Norfield, we made some decisions in the past and came up with these decisions in the past believing that certain things would change or when the highway got redone, certain things would come in that didn't come to fruition. And then kind of like working in sports is now made those plans really not so and not worth moving forward with. So I'm honestly, if it all changed to residential, but I think everyone has the right to, to talk on it. And I definitely would agree to just send a letter to them and at least give them an opportunity to come here and talk about it.
So all properties within. So all properties within 600 feet of the proposed?
I would say anybody that...
West of Highway 41.
Anybody that's showing up there in the gray that is currently zoned business industrial.
West of...
Not zoned, in the future land use.
Future land use. Who falls into that?
And west of 41 or west of Velp?
I would say west of 41.
41.
West of 41. Because I'm correct here, that white line is 41 running through here, right?
Yeah.
Right for the G.
It doesn't, they're all, they'd be the same owners.
Yeah.
So that east and west of Velp wouldn't matter as long as we're staying west of 41. It's all the same property owners on the south.
West of 41 and put it on the next agenda item. And if they really have something to say, they'll come and talk about it.
And if not, we'll move forward.
And we'll make a decision on it at that meeting. Excellent.
Okay.
Good thought, good discussion. All right. That was item 8A. Let's move on to item 9A, Administrative Items. Item A, Ordinance 2022-03 Amending Chapter 4, Subchapter 4, Emergency Alarm Ordinance of the Swamaco Municipal Code. Administrator Kaker.
Thank you. So this ordinance would amend our code as it relates to emergency alarms and false alarms. We recognize that there is some gray areas that pertains to the definition of leesee. And so Deputy Pisani and I worked on revising the code. We tweaked a few definitions, removed some unnecessary definitions, and rewrote the purpose of the subchapter. And really, at the end of the day, we want reliable alarm systems in our community and we don't want fire engines and police vehicles flying through the village when responding to an alarm where an emergency situation does not actually exist. So that's what we're trying to do here, trying to make it a little more clear for everybody, for the police officers that respond, for the residents, for the business owners, and for staff. So any questions on that? This is just a first reading.
Good idea.
I appreciate this being completed because there shouldn't have been gray area in our old one, but apparently it was. The only gray area that I see that's left is, or someone could argue, is any person, firm, partner, or corporation. I would just add the word renter or something to that extent, leesee, renter.
So the reason why we excluded it, ultimately, we, we need somebody to be responsible. And it's too difficult for us to prove who is the leesee.
You were trying to get rid of that word specifically.
Say, for example, somebody's in a country and in suites, they're renting a room and they set off the fire alarm because of their steam shower. Well, are we going to find the person who's renting the room?
True.
Or are we going for the person who owns the facility?
The owner.
So that was a deliberate exclusion. Any questions?
No, I'm thankful for this. I appreciate the rewrite. You know, I know that this was, there was some, was somewhat tumultuous in working through this with individuals within the village. I'm glad they came forward. I'm glad they pursued it and I'm glad that we're getting this tightened up. This is a good thing.
So we'll bring it back for a second reading at the April 4th meeting.
I appreciate you sending back my questions, so.
Sure.
Excellent. All right, item 9B, Mink Ranch Road Property Request for Proposal. Administrator Kaker.
So the Village Board requested about a month ago that an RFP be drafted for approximately 23 acres of land at the Mink Ranch site. Including your board packet was a draft RFP. I made a couple of minor adjustments, including emphasizing that we would require a public road be built that connects Mink Ranch Road and Harbor Lights. I put a June 1st deadline on there for proposals. I think that gives developers plenty of time to put together a quality proposal for the Village Board to consider. Any questions?
And they're required to hook up to water as well.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, the 200, the possible $200,000 would be great in the sewer budget. That could give relief that sewer customers need.
Sure.
And I know, well, it's probably ultimately up to us, but I know Andy will handle that well. I don't know how, how does, so we get the money and then how is that decided?
Well, it goes into the sewer fund. And then the board gets to decide what to do with it, whether you're, you're going to knock off some of the debt that the sewer fund has or that goes into a cash reserve.
Okay.
I'm excited to see some proposals. It'll be interesting to see what this drums up.
Yeah, I know. I am too.
So no motion is necessary. I will get this out later this week and then we'll be back in June.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Steve Andrews, congratulations to you because you really kind of got the ball moving on that and started that discussion. Well, it looked like a piece of property just sitting there doing nothing for us and I think it could potentially be a great development of some form of residential development.
Good vision, good vision. All right, number 10, item number 10, Finance Department Items. A, 2022-2023 Tax Collection Agreement. Administrator Kaker.
So every year, we approve a tax collection agreement with Brown County. This year, there is no option for municipalities to request that the county collect the first installment. So it is good that we did this on our own last year and have learned the system. That's really the only change. The county will still print and mail tax bills with the village reimbursing the county for actual postage costs. That is option A. Option B would be the village taking care of the physical mailing of the tax bills, which doesn't seem necessary if the county is willing to do that just for the cost of postage.
So is it literally just the cost of postage, not the cost of print, not the person?
Right, yeah, just postage.
All right. I mean, they played games last year, so.
I understand.
All right, so if there's no further discussion on this item, I'd look for a motion.
I'll offer a motion to approve authorizing staff to sign the Brown County Intergovernmental 2022 Property Tax Bill Agreement, tax bill preparation with mainly an option one, or mainly an option A.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor from trustee Rodden to authorize staff to sign the Brown County Intergovernmental 2022 Property Tax Bill Agreement for bill preparation utilizing option A. Is there a second to this?
Second.
It is. Second from trustee Andrews. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you. All right. At this time, we are moving on to item 11, which is to convene into closed session for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. And for purposes of this, we will be discussing item tid number four, Development Agreement. Do I have a motion to move into closed session?
So moved.
A motion from trustee Rodden to move into closed session?
Second.
I have a second from trustee Schneider. All those in favor?
Aye.
Can we do a roll call?
Roll call.
That's right.
Trustee Andrews?
Aye.
Trustee Eckert?
Aye.
Trustee Ward?
Aye.
Trustee Rodden?
Aye.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
President Fenrazum?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.